If we could, it's just about five, I guess, a little bit more after six o'clock. We'll call to order the subcommittee, the Personnel Subcommittee of the Lowell School Committee, and I'd ask the clerk to call the roll.
Thank you, Chairperson Martin.
Here.
Mr. Conway, Ms. Scott. Three present.
Thank you very much. We have one topic on our agenda for the evening. Superintendent Jean Franco is going to be presenting the Subcommittee with her goals for 2012, 2013. So that would be concluding at the end of this school year. Am I reading that correctly?
Yes, but I am one superintendent who is in disagreement with the Department of Education timeline because I believe that for your purposes of evaluation, that you should be able to extend it for when we get our summative assessment back, or we could do it in the summer when we get our beginning MCAS scores back. So last year, we kind of went from this time of the year to almost the end of the summer. The wish of the committee could be when you want to have evidence of the summative. I will have all kinds of other evidence that I've seen, that I have included in this report. However, you might want to wait until I can tell you how many schools moved from Level One to Level Two because some of the evidence is that kind of extensive data. So Ms. Martin, I would suggest to the committee that this be the beginning piece and there be kind of a mid-quarter check-in. There's kind of a mid-year check-in, which could be probably around April-ish, and it could end whenever, at the will of the committee. It depends on data, or we could do an end of the year like we did last year and then do an addendum. My contract is not tied to any kind of additional money. I just maintain the same salary for the first two years of my contract. That was how we settled that. So it could be at the will of the committee. I would suggest that you would want to see how the district did when measuring my work.
And I think that that actually does correlate because what we're talking about, I mean, it would still be judging, evaluating on this current school year.
Yes.
We would just be doing it as we have historically, usually in the September
Yes.
kind of timeframe. But just so we're clear, the actual period that's being evaluated would be the current 2012, 2013 school year, and that we do the evaluation in September, which is, I believe, when we would have the full package of data to be able to make our assessments.
Yes.
Okay. Excellent. What I'd actually recommend, if you could, Madam Superintendent, is walk us through your goals document. Again, so we're all clear, we'll be reviewing this tonight, making a recommendation to the full committee in about 50 minutes, with the hopes that we may be able to take action on it tonight, but recognizing that other committee members may need some additional time. But I think if you can kind of walk us through this as a starting point, then Subcommittee Members can comment as we go.
Thank you, Ms. Martin. As you know, since I assumed the role of superintendent, we have been working on core issues in the district. Much data was looked at over time, many interviews. You have seen my entry plan. You have also seen goals and objectives for the districts over five years. You've also seen the executive summary. So keeping to the plan of the district, which is what all of my principals, assistant superintendents, and teachers really are looking at, what are we working on as a system to make the difference? So the first huge core issue in the district is communication oversight and shared leadership. So how are we going to build our teams in schools? How are we going to build the work to make the best possible outcomes? Second is response to instruction, which is making sure that every child is getting the instruction that challenges them to meet and exceed standards at all levels of the organization. And of course, because we have had challenges over a long period of time in meeting the needs of special populations, that in itself is its own goal. So what I did in this document is I took the district's strategic goals and I brought in the most important work we've done, and actually what we've learned together as a committee and as an administration. So the first goal is my professional practice goal, and it's to advance the professional growth and development of the assistant superintendents and principals. And using the educator evaluation system, using that completely to make sure that the schools are run and assessed in the most viable way to make sure we make the progress over time. So in looking at that, you know, I have a theory of action. If I lead the school leaders to targeted system of professional practice and build shared leadership that's tied to the data every day, kids, we know that children are growing as we go, then we will have, the school culture will improve and student achievement will increase. And as we're seeing in our data, where school culture is on the move, schools are on the move. And so that's really important work. And so that's my first goal. As evidence for that goal, I would provide you with copies of when I'm going to visits. I do announce to all the principals why I'm coming, what I expect to accomplish. I also would have a log of all the visits. I'm in my second round of school visits. I also want, I'm giving feedback. So part of the new evaluation system is when you have any kind of formal or informal that you're using for evaluation purposes, you give feedback. So that's what I'm doing with the principals. I'm sending emails after my visits. And then looking at the schools during the year. So I just, for example, was at the Maury School yesterday, and we were looking at the data, how the children are growing, to make sure that the schools are making progress as we grow, so we know what we can look for at the end of the year as far as maintaining their capacity as a Level One school. And again, that you will see by next, when we're done with all the school accountability pieces, that there's a 10% increase in schools that move to the next level from a Level Three to a Level Two. So there's a minimum of at least 10% of our schools that move up. I have in your packet put the standards on the educator evaluation rubric that correspond to this particular, and all the standards are covered in this, but these are the standards that will, in fact, lend themselves for your evaluation of my work. So that's the first one.
Can I, perhaps as we go through?
Yes.
It might be easier to ask our questions?
Absolutely.
I don't know if anyone else has any other questions, but I, just one, on the number six evidence piece, the 10% increase in schools that move to the next level in accountability status.
Mm-hmm.
In a real number?
Yep.
What is that, like two, three?
I would say two or three. Two or three schools.
Okay, so you'd have two schools across the whole district that move up?
At least, yes.
With the, would we, would we be able to add into that goal that we would not see any backslide? I mean, I'd be comfortable saying that two move up if we were including within this an expectation that no one moves down.
Maintain capacity of all the others. Okay. I could add that, sure.
Perfect. Thank you. I don't know if anyone has. There you go. You know, 10%, I'm just not sure where that goal came from.
I, the 10% piece is with all the work we're doing in improvement, I know that there are schools that with the right work, there'll be at least a minimum of 10%. If you want me to rephrase that to say a minimum of 10%, I'd be more than comfortable with that. I am just trying to make the realistic goals of how much gain. And I look, I know the data pretty well of our district, and so how much gain has to be made to do that movement in a one-year period of time, depending on the subgroup and the data to, this is the figure that made sense to me. But if you'd like me to leave that at a minimum of 10%, that would be fine with me. Whatever the will of the committee.
I'd be comfortable if we did place it at a minimum.
Okay.
And Mr. Conway?
Thank you. Madam Superintendent, it's funny, I mean, I'm focusing on that myself. The 10%, now, how many, how many moved to the next level last year?
Oh, last year, there was, I think, six, six schools that moved either, some moved the opposite way, but I think six schools. So six out of 24, so.
Could you answer a question here? You know, and I, and I think it's great that we can increase the level of schools for another, let's say, another two or three schools, which would be, which would be super. What ingredients or components would cause an issue with that in a negative way that we might run into? In other words, I'm just using this example when I'm, when I'm thinking about the budget. You know, let's assume we have X amount of dollars cut from the budget. Would this affect that, that goal or that increase? Or could there be something else that would affect it in a negative way? Perhaps a great influence influx of additional students or something?
Both, both of those, those items mentioned could impact outcomes, but the work that we're trying to do is to make sure there's growth. And remember that when you're counting accountability, it's not just that big picture number, the PPI they call it, it's the growth piece. So sometimes when we have new additions to our school system, there can be different pieces that come into play. So both of those could impact outcomes, but we need to move our schools, no matter what the externals are, and that's the commitment that our principals and our assistant superintendents make to this as well as our teachers. So we'll see the growth over time. It is very challenging with the class size. I'm not going to be dishonest about that. Class size is really an indicator, and we need, that's something I'm worried about.
Well, as, as
Over time.
Right. As we're moving forward, if any of these indicators you feel that are coming up in a negative way, or perhaps can impact us, I think you need to let us know because at the end of the, excuse me, at the end of the period, we, you know, we're going to be looking at that number, 10%, and if, and if it doesn't, if it doesn't go up, let's say, we're obviously going to be questioning. But if, if we're notified in advance of some of the things that we might, stumbling blocks that we might run into, I think it would be helpful for us, it would be helpful for all of us, tell you the truth, on how to plan going forward with it. Thank you.
Yep.
You were asking about the number of schools that backslide from their level. Would that be an evident, a goal that would provide evidence? Would that be one of them to have no increase in number of schools?
Yeah, that's what we had just said, that we'd have, we'd have a minimum of 10%.
Add it into the document?
Yeah, yeah, that's exactly how I understood.
I've rewarded a minimum of 10% increase in schools that move to the next level in the accountability standard and maintain capacity of all others.
Right. Okay. Thank you.
Thank you.
So goal number two.
Onto goal number two. So goal number two is a goal that we have been trying to, to negotiate for a long period of time. As you know the process better than probably the regular viewer, we have been talking about the implementation, the educator evaluation piece. I've been working on the language in adaptation, that language for more than a year. And so at this particular point, the implementation of that has a lot of important pieces. But having a shared vision of evaluation is essential in a district, and it is the regulation of the state. So I'm, I'm going to tell you that the reflective piece and the continuous improvement piece of the educator evaluation piece is most assuredly the vision of this administration. This evaluation is to see teachers reflect, assess, and grow. Evaluators and teachers work together. It is the intention. And so in essence, that's the work that I, I will do with, with teachers and administrators. So that will include the evidence, which is successful negotiation of the process, and making a collaborative group come together. Now, you, you know that there's a collaborative group piece that we're looking at in the regulation and of course in the district. The training of evaluation systems for evaluated administrators and teachers. We've begun that training for administrators and looking at how that will evolve for teachers. And then to make sure the clarity of the process is across the board, tied to reflective practice, growth in culture, and student progress. And most assuredly, the student progress piece is a very important part. And again, empower teachers and leaders to build goal setting and to make sure the goals collected have the indicators that are necessary. In my evidence for you all, I would want to be taking samples. I wouldn't think that you want to see every single goal, but samples of the goals, of the outcomes, and how I do that work with people. And this, my theory of action being if all constituency groups are trained effectively to develop SMART goals that connect district and school goals to educator, professional practice, and student outcomes, then the alignment of district initiatives and professional practice will improve and render student outcomes. And so that being that as, this is an opportunity for us to use evaluation as a reflective growth process for our teachers and administrators to bring children to the next level. And the schools that are on the move, which I've been to a quarter of them for the second time, are looking at that data with teachers and how the kids are growing, and it's, it's very impressive. And so that's the work when evaluation can even get to the next level. The way I'm evaluating teachers get to the, I'm sorry, principals gets to the next level.
This is, you know, obviously a topic that this committee has talked a great deal about, the Subcommittee and more importantly, the full committee. I know it's something that Superintendent Franco, you and I have discussed at great length. It is, I hate to say there's any one single thing that overshadows everything else, but this really is profoundly important in our district and our Commonwealth. I think we've hit some significant stumbling blocks in implementing this, and I, for one, I know have been very disappointed that we haven't been able to implement that at this point. Just so, you know, we're clear, as we kind of look at the evidence standards that you've set, you know, for, for my perspective, we'll be looking at by the conclusion of the evaluation period to have a in-place implementation strategy that will allow us to look at September as a starting point for all of our staff at every level, recognizing what their evaluation standards are going to be, what that process is going to be, that we do have in place signed agreements. I mean, it's a huge endeavor, and it's certainly, I think, a challenging goal, but I'd be hard-pressed to think of anything that's going to be more important to the way we conduct the business of education here in the city. And I think it's going to be a real challenge for you. I appreciate that it's here. Thank you. Any other?
So goal number three is something that we've been looking at as a committee because in developing these goals, lots of the motions, lots of the talking we've done together as a team that guides all the teaching and learning in the city. This is one that's of importance. So the goal number three is to adapt budget document and process of budgeting. So to review the existing conditions within Lowell Public Schools Business Office, to ascertain the degree to which the operations and common practices align with statutory requirements of the Commonwealth of Massachusetts that pertain to finance procedures, determine if the staffing levels are appropriate for the required workflow, determine the effectiveness of the district's processes associated with budget, planning and development, financial reporting, payroll, accounts payable, and cash management. So in essence, we know that the budget rules the work. How we determine how you spend money, and this is a committee that the whole time have been lucky enough to sit in this chamber, that have always looked at how each dollar is spent to impact outcomes for young people. So in essence, we're, we're saying if we involve all stakeholders in developing that annual school department operating budget that provides for individual schools as well as the district priorities, they will be discussed and agreed upon in a comprehensive This committee has been instrumental in engaging the NASBO Association, the Massachusetts Association of School Business Officials, and they have conducted already a financial operations review, which is due to come back. It's actually overdue to come back. We've met more than two months ago with the final?
No, over December.
Yes. So the, probably the end of November. And so we're looking forward to having that document because that is a guiding document for us to say, just because we've been doing business in one certain way for a number of years, it's probably a time for us to look at what the recommendations are and to enhance them. And that budget, which is the document of the school committee, the document of all of us in administration, to really look for with guidance from Finance Subcommittee and others, that document. So that is the third goal of the district. It's primary goal of Assistant Superintendent, Deputy Superintendent Lang and myself, but it's also to give the message, what we're spending money on, where and why, and those processes being updated with the guidance of the professionals. Now, I'll entertain any questions, but for the evidence pieces, I'll just let everybody know that we'll identify and document the existing conditions within the Business Office Operations and Practices, which will be recommendations to us that we will bring forward to you. We will identify inefficiencies and the impact that they have on procedural pieces of the Business Office. We'll recommend long-range improvements to the financial operations in the school system. We will make sure that our district priorities and goals are integrated with individual school priorities and goals. We'll also see that district and school resources accomplish targeted initiatives, and they're clearly represented in the budget. And additionally, that the student performance information will inform budgetary decision-making through the budget process that will be coming up soon. So those being the action steps that you'll see, but we will use recommendations and our work together as a committee to make sure that budget document becomes more of a living, breathing document that shows where we're spending the money, why, and student outcome that's tied to it.
In terms of, you know, this committee, and again, I know these conversations are ongoing in a lot of ways, I look at that number five evidenced item, accomplish targeted initiatives and priorities that will be clearly represented in the budget. To my mind, certainly we talk about the finance and the operations, this is also the facilities area. And I think it would be helpful as we look at the, as we lay the groundwork for what evidence we're really going to be looking at, you know, at the conclusion of the evaluation period, for those targeted initiatives to be laid out. You know, this isn't a, this isn't an area that necessarily will see a lot of change. It's not a curriculum area or some of the other student performance areas. I think that collectively between the superintendent and the committee, we should be able to come up with what those targeted initiatives will be in terms of finance operations and facilities concerns. I know there's been a lot of work around these issues, but I think this would be a good place to document what we'll be focused on in the next year and what we'll be specifically looking for in terms of accomplishments for the next year. So I don't know if you'd like to consider that and perhaps present to the committee what you'd like to name as your, I don't know, top three initiatives?
Do is to, after number five, to include, to just add on, including targeted priorities in the area of facilities, to make sure that that's part of the evidence.
And actually stating what those, what they will be. Priority number one, you know, safety, implementing safety changes. Priority, you know, I'd take your recommendation and then we can discuss and, you know, conclude what are, what the final areas will be that we want to see focused on and prioritized, but I think that might be something that you could communicate to us after.
Okay. We'll add that.
Any other questions, concerns? Mr. Conway and then Ms. Scott.
Yeah, just very quickly. I mean, that's obviously, it's a goal each and every year to target the, our initiatives, and it's something that we're, needless to say, we have to continue to do. I think one of our problems that we have, and it seems as though we're always faced with it, is what is the budget going to be? How much money are we going to be coming back with the state and the, and the federal government? And, you know, and I think it becomes a, it becomes a daunting job to be able to accomplish this and to be able to juggle everything and to make sure that we're able to meet these goals. And I think the whole idea of targeted initiatives, I think, is extremely important because of the fact that, again, we, we cross our fingers and hope that the monies do come in and hold our breath, and it's a little bit different than, I think, perhaps running a business because quite often that bottom line becomes a lot clearer and a lot earlier. And we don't have that luxury, I'm afraid, in this situation. So I think this is, it's an excellent, excellent goal here and initiatives, and, you know, I look forward to these, to the priorities on it, to see those priorities because I think that's going to be important. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Martin. I think the facility aspects of bringing that up are imperative that we bring in the high school as one of those top three objectives. I looked at the goals, and I liked the last goal in terms of the Level Three and Four schools, but I think with the accreditation coming up in less than two years or two years, the time is now to make the moves in terms of what we need for the facility. We'll be talking about some of that at this point, but actually measuring what we're doing as an administration, not only here at Central but in the high school, is very important because if we miss a step, the facility is equally important when they're reviewing accreditation. And how's that tie into supporting the curriculum, i.e. science labs, technology, et cetera? So I appreciate Ms. Martin bringing that out to the forefront. I would hope that we have the high school as, you know, safety's obviously number one, but the high school should be a top priority as well. Thank you.
Goal number four.
Thank you. So for us to move schools through supervision and evaluation, we have to have a specific targeted focus. So goal number three is specifically focused, although we will maintain the progress and growth in every building through supervision evaluation, through professional development, through a number of ways. This fourth goal is to truly focus on the Level Three schools and look at the work that needs to be accomplished in those buildings. I also want to remind the committee that these five goals are not all the work that will be accomplished by this administration. These are just the five that I'm choosing that I think really, really frame the work that we're all about in this district. So the fourth goal is districts, focus the district support team, strategically study school progress, and institute a focused system of support in the lowest Level Three schools to improve academic achievement by development of internal capacity of the district school teams to improve student achievement. In simple terms, I want to look at how to avoid ever seeing a Level Four school in this district, and that's with focused work on outcomes. So the theory of action that I'm presenting, under my leadership, I will make certain that district administrators and school leaders implement a focused system of review of professional practice, as well as utilizing district and school systems of support strategically tied to use a formative and summative assessment data to improve school culture, instruction, and achievement. So it's building the teams to make the difference with young people. And so in the action steps, in the evidence, here's what the plan is as far as targeted look. And we've learned a lot from our Level Four school, but we've learned a lot from schools that have made great progress over time. And we know that we have to look at their performance on a regular basis. The work that we did at the Merklin School and the work that this committee has already approved is work with CTEC, which they came in an external review system, they looked at our systems, they interview staff, they interview families. They really have a triangulated system of support. So to improve the achievement of all children, we'll bring the critical thinking forward, teams of teachers coming together like we have done in other buildings. We're going to improve students, parents, and the community and include them in part of the learning, and we're going to maintain accountability for the educational excellence at the school level. This committee was supportive of the difference in the contact negotiations that occurred at Merklin. The first year, they had all planning time. The second year, they came to you, and it was a change in the plan, and they said, "We need more planning time," and this committee supported that, knowing that the people from the inside really have to do that work. In our Race to the Top initiative, there is a focus on the schools that need to make the most growth over the next few months. That's the impetus of this particular goal. Again, there's staff expectations of instructional focus. We already have dedicated Race to the Top money for programs for young people, but also for the teachers to come together to plan. And this is a consolidated planning. The CTEC will be leadership teams growing together to say, what are we doing well? What do we need to improve? And how do we get to the underpinnings? So we have the standards, these big standards, you get what do kids need to know and be able to do based on the data that we collect from all groups, from the highest achiever to children, to a child who just came here from another country this morning. That's the work. We can check on this by checking on this assessment data, the TELS data, the CTEC data. Are we building the team? A school does A school does not produce if you're not building the teachers and administrators together as they go forward. That's part of the work. And also, looking at that student achievement data. I was in two schools yesterday, and the principals were able to look at how the kids had progressed already this year. And I was in another one this morning. Same thing happened. So kids who were at the highest end have gone up. We're looking at that data, and we're getting much better at it. That's the focus of how to make a level three school go to a higher level of level three and then get out of that lowest accountability piece. That's all the work. Again, teacher leadership needs to improve, and we need to empower our teachers to help on the leadership level by being part of the school teams. That's all part of it. You'll see that in this particular standard, it's almost the whole, it's part of the whole rubric. It's building professional culture, which is standard four. It's building the team, which is standard two. And it's also all of the instruction and leadership pieces in standard one. So you'll see that when you get to the rubric and you kind of match up which ones go with which particular one. So this sounds very complicated, but what it is, is building teams to work together to do the best in instruction to get outcomes with young people. And it is going to matter who the leader is. It's going to matter who the teachers are and how much time they're given together to get to the outcomes with young people. The power, as we keep on saying, is in the schools. We just have to bring it forward for them to do the best job possible. And that's what goal three is. I am more than prepared to, for summative assessment in the middle, to share some of this data from the schools that we're looking at. We already have done some preliminary work in this area. We've already had CTEC survey, CTEC survey in some of these places. So I can frame this work, because it's complicated, in curriculum subcommittee meetings as we go or in whatever form you deem appropriate, Ms. Martin. So I would take maybe after the fact, how you want evidence, when you want evidence, because that's something I would like to know. So that's the fourth, and very important one. This is detailed, but it will matter for, if you're, we're going to get results by focusing with our teams of teachers.
The distinction that's made, and I appreciate that kind of in your introduction of the goal. Certainly, we recognize that this work is happening, you know, throughout our district. Looking at the actual numbers, when we look at, you know, one level four school that has already made positive movement, what's the total number of level three schools within the district? Okay.
I believe we're eight level three schools. And there are, I think, there are three or four on the cusp. And there, we already know how many points, we already know how many points everybody has to make, but there are, and it's really strategic work on how to build. And then we have five, five schools that are in the CTEC process. The news that nobody wants to hear is we have one person in charge of school improvement. This field is changing drastically, because it's about school improvement. It's about getting district teams, district experts, school teams, coaches together to kind of say, "Let us help each other with an outside-inside view of how to improve." So I, my biggest challenge on this particular goal is you have one elementary coordinator of reading who's going to these six buildings and trying to do that focus. You have one school improvement coordinator. So it becomes challenging with trying to get the district team to spend the time that they want to be able to spend to, actually, the coaches are the coaches. So that, that will be a challenge in this particular one. And I want to be honest, the, the work of the administration is fantastic. The work of the schools is fantastic, but being able to lead this has now, I don't know, we had one level four school. Now we're adding on, you know, another six here, five here. So that's.
From the three here?
Yes.
From the third tier?
For the third tier to, to avoid.
Yeah, not additional level fours.
No, no, threes, that we want to make sure. The lowest level threes, and we were doing this focal point for this year.
Which is exactly, yeah, exactly. I mean, having addressed, I think, the real crisis that a level four school represents and seen such a dramatic improvement in that, in that one, one school community, it does make sense. You know, this is what we need to do next, is keep pushing forward and keep bringing all of our schools up through the tier system, so we're all functioning at level one. Mr. Conway?
Yeah, just very quickly, thank you, Ms. Martin. Number five there, which I think is extremely important, that's the, where it says teacher leadership improvement. Are there, are there common threads that seem to foster this, this teacher leadership within, within the school that we are able, or you are able to identify? Because I think it's, I think it's extremely important that, you know, that they become empowered, shall we say? And, and that they are working as a group. So is it, is it easy to, to come up with the common threads in different schools? I mean, the reason why I'm saying that is because are those schools become the models or, do you know what I'm getting at?
I absolutely know what you're going about. And off the top of my head, I can go on for days and days to talk about specifics. I won't do that.
No, you only have about 12 minutes.
I know our agenda is quite long enough. But to look at where there's respect, mutual trust, it builds. And so, you know, you can read volumes across the nation internationally where there is shared leadership. It's very important. So it's really how, it's about a skill set. How do you build a community of learners to do that? That's the magic of this work. It's very interesting, because culturally, this has changed. You know, you, you know, years ago, you became the principal because you wanted to be the big boss. Well, the principal has less boss authority than ever before, because what their work is, is to build the team to believe. And our successful organizations and businesses internationally always come with that belief system. And so that's something we have to work on, because it is a culture shift. And as you all know, the last thing to change in any organization is a culture shift. That's why I've always worked with kids, because they're so flexible, and they'll, they'll buy into anything that looks like it's rewarding and engaging. And so, yes, I can talk about that, Mr. Conway, but that's some of the work I'm doing. I'm actually doing the evaluations this time by the level of the schools, going to all the level ones, all the level twos, then the level threes, and then kind of working together on how the strengths and the, and the challenges that schools have and how we can capitalize on each other's brilliance.
Thank you.
Okay, Mr. Leary?
Just, it might be some semantics, but just reading the language, that school improvement plans will be put in place. I'm under the assumption that every school has an improvement plan. So we already have that in place. I guess the question is, how do we measure if we're effective? And how do we hold that goal accountable to being effective? I know this, the eight level three schools, some of them, Pawtucketville's perfect example, where there's like one little tiny area that they improve, and then they're a level one school. So some of these are misnomers. You highlighted the three lowest ones, where there are probably multiple areas where dramatic improvements needed. And Mr. Conway presented common threads. I mean, we have different schools that have demonstrated how it's effective. How do we measure, I guess, you and ourselves, that we're actually doing the right things to take those lower level three schools and bring them up? I mean, and if level three's a misnomer, again, because you look at Pawtucketville, they're like millimeters away from being a level one. So it's not, we say we have eight, but the reality is that number's.
That's why we're working on the lowest five. And, and so, it's an excellent question, because this is school improvement on steroids. So that's why we have the outside consultants in CTEC. You're looking at the data. You're asking parents what they think. You look, you're asking, you're asking students, there's a student survey. You're, you're looking at inside issues that have gone over time. You're looking at data in a different format, and teachers and administrators are looking at that together, and they're making the decisions for where the change has to happen and how we can impact. We're also continuing the eleven essentials conditions in the district, because we're a level four district. So we have formative assessment, so we're doing data assessment all the time. We're checking that data. So this is really targeting the underlying reasons why, that they haven't been able to figure out because they have not been making improvement.
Just to go back then, so the evidence, so we have five of them that are like, that need CTEC's involvement. How many of those five do we anticipate will be moving up to level two? I mean, how do we measure that? Because we have to have a real tangible measurement of success. I mean, obviously, we want all five, but I mean, if we put this effort in next year and we look at the evaluation, how many of those, I mean, next year might be too soon, but if we get into the second year, those schools should be level two, level one. I mean, that's why, I guess, I'm looking at tangible measurement. You know, three out of five moving up to level one, you know, all five moving to level two. I mean, that's kind of what I'm, you know, I know it's hard to do in one year's time, because by the time we get around to the evaluation, you won't have all that data perhaps anyway, because some of these CTEC initiatives haven't taken place and haven't been in one year. So I guess that's the question. How do we hold you accountable, hold ourselves accountable to making this important and really timely movement?
If I, if I could, Ms. Leary, just because I know that we had discussed this at the, at the beginning of the meeting. We did discuss, and the, in the area of the first goal, I believe it was, that, yeah, in the first goal, that we'd be looking at, there's a 10% increase in the schools moving to the next level. Basically, the way we've kind of fine-tuned that goal in our conversations tonight is that we're looking at a minimum of two schools moving up the priority list and with no schools dipping down, so that we maintain where we're at and we see positive movement from at least two schools. And that's in this, basically, this current school year, because we kind of set the, we discussed that too, just kind of setting the parameters of timeframe, that we'll be doing our evaluation in like September timeframe, because that's when we get all of the summative data that we'd be able to draw from.
Oh, good. I appreciate that. Thanks.
You missed two minutes in a meeting, and a lot happens.
Traffic's brutal out there tonight. All right. A lot of snowplows out there. Thank you.
Which brings us to goal number five.
Goal number five is about dropout rate, but also it is, thank you. It is refocus, align, and expand alternative programs. And so, using the current data and knowledge of successful dropout prevention programs that have rendered results for low students, the district will refocus the alignment of the alternative school programs as one indicator. When you're looking at this particular, my theory of action is if you clarify the purpose and choices of alternative education programs, and they open option to build skill level of confidence and more academic exposure for at-risk youth, then more educational options will be available. The loss of at-risk students will diminish, and the dropout rate will decrease over time. But in looking at the evidence, it's very important for us to clarify the, the growth and progress of children on both ends of the organization. So for instance, for children who are at the lower end, and we know that we actually have enough data over time on young people, that you know by second grade, children who are at risk. We need to do a more substantial job of looking at children who are at risk. And I had this conversation, I think, offline with Ms. Suckovich the other evening. Between all of our agencies, we know families who need help. And so, in essence, looking at that end is really important. Looking at data, looking at attendance, looking at who needs that kind of assistance. The area that is important on the kids who we meet, we need to get engaged at a very early stage, is one part of this. So if, we already have in place through the Office of Student Services the early warning indicator system, which really looks at at-risk kids at a different time. And we have a baseline of all these, these children. And we're going to use that information as a baseline this year to see who those children are at different grade levels. Also, because we, again, have been under budget constraints and whatnot, and we're not quite sure about next year, but we need to reassess the alternative programs we've had over time. The middle school, the elementary is a very small program, and beyond, especially the high school. So we're looking at what we're, what we're doing, and to have an assessment for this committee that says, "Here's what we're doing. Here's what we see long term." What happens to a bridge kid? We have a beautiful report, but are they finishing high school? What happens to a kid who's been at the Cardinal O'Connell School? There's some, there's some data we have to sift through in, in, in some student support subcommittee meetings to see where the focus will be, to see, is the work, is the money we're spending going right down to that budget? So these all kind of come together. I hope that's feeling that way a little bit. But when we start looking to see, that's how we're spending the money. And we know that we could do a better job if we do something to get that kid reading by grade three. And so we, it's looking at that. It's also looking at children on the high end. So looking at that lyceum program, is this big enough? Does it meet the needs of the kids? It's looking at more at-risk. And I have to tell you that I don't like to talk about staffing, but I do believe that if I have to talk about one thing before we go into budget, we do need to have some kind of director of all the alternative programs. Because I spoke to this committee about principle of record. And ever since we talked about principle of record, I've had a sick feeling in my mind, because I know how much I'm asking them to do. So I'm thinking that maybe we have to think to, how do we lead our alternative programs? Who's in charge of them? How is it consistent? So I'm just thinking about maybe as we reevaluate the work at the Malloy, we'll have to look at alternatives with a real focus and strategically plan, what has the data looked like? How should it change for this generation of young people? I know I need more programs for little children. I know I do. And you all do too. So this is what this is about, but it's both ends of the organization. I almost see that looking at the children on the high end is not so much a student support focus, but it's more of a curriculum focus. How do we enrich their focus? But really looking at that. And that comes into all the conversations we have about a STEM school. We've had about lyceum expansion. We've had about other things. So that's what the impetus of this particular goal is.
Thank you. I realize that we have very limited time right now. I'd just like to say that I do, you know, very strongly support this goal. I think that our alternative programs have grown up in a fairly reactionary way. You know, problems have presented in the district. We've developed programming to address it. The idea of really taking a look at what we currently have and looking at it with the idea that we need to, you know, perhaps add, perhaps change, I think that if that is a process that we go through in this current, current year, it would be extremely well-served. And so I'm very pleased to see this as, as a real programmatic goal for the district as a whole. And I will also include, you know, we've spoken for many years about high-achieving students. They are, you know, they have the same requirements. They have the same special status as any other group of students. So I think including them in this, this priority and this goal is exactly what we should be doing. And I, my only recommendation is when you do come back to us is within the evidence that we see that specific population mentioned. Just so that we're all clear that this is a full gamut of specified alternative programming, so it needs to be specifically referenced there. I will also say, Mr. Conway next, but we have extremely limited time.
Thank you. I just want to point out one, one item here on goal number five, and that's number four there, the dropout rate and failure rate. You know, I applaud you for this. I certainly do. There's no doubt about it. It's extremely ambitious. But what I'm wondering is, how realistic is that, is that number, Madam Superintendent?
Talking about point, point 3.5? That's supposed to be point 3.5.
Oh, I'm saying, am I?
Sorry.
All right. I said to myself, 35. This, this, this woman's a miracle worker, but I'm not going to say it.
I would never blame anyone else but myself for a misprint, but that's a point 3.5.
So do you want to leave the 35% in there or?
Yeah, if you don't want me to leave my goals, yes, please do so. But interestingly, we took the five-year goals and indicators that were presented last year and divided it by the five years. So we'd have to make that percentage, 3.35, each year for us to get that way. But we do have to, we have to include more options. And there's a way to do more options. Mr. Conway, thank you so much for pointing that out, because that is a typo.
Because you would have been stuck with the 35%, by the way.
I would have been looking for a new job, Mr. Conway. Thank you.
If there are no other questions, what I would recommend is that we've made some recommendations. If the document could be updated and forwarded to the committee so that perhaps at our next school committee meeting, we can take final action on it. And again, I would encourage all members of the school committee to review it. This will be the document that we will be grading and using to, to grade the superintendent at the conclusion of the evaluation period. So it does warrant some review, to say the least. And I thank the subcommittee and our other members of the committee who joined us. I would entertain a motion to, thank you, to adjourn the subcommittee by Mr. Conway, seconded by Ms. Scott. All those in favor, say aye. Okay, stay tuned for the next one.